Morning, meeting's ordered. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any citizens to be heard of stuff that's not on the agenda? Do you have anything you need to bring forward? Can't be see a good operation in motion. Okay, very good. Okay, well that will go on the approval of the minutes.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to the approval of the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, approved. Payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, second to free the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? That will move into, we want to recognize Saint John's Church in Georgetown. They made a $200 donation to the Clay County for some work to send to serve people that out there and really appreciate that donation from Saint John's Church. Thank you very much. That will go into committee assignments. You have before you, is there anybody that's got some questions on or want any changes made? Matt, we'll start with you. Do you have any?
Yeah, I'm good.
Jenny, do you have anything?
I think it looks good.
Kevin?
Mr. I've got a couple of things here. The FM diversion authority, if they, Colleen, if we can just take the vice chair off of that, I will not be the vice chair this coming year. Then also, going down a few, we have a Minnesota diversion authority, JPA, and we have a Moorhead-Clay County JPA diversion. They're the same thing. So, I think maybe we can just remove one of those.
Which one you want to?
I would say, I would say keep the Moorhead-Clay County JPA and just get rid of the Minnesota diversion authority JPA.
Okay.
All right, very, for the same thing. And then...
Well, you want it the same wording because it's on grants too, so make sure...
Yeah, same thing should be done on grants. And then also, it shows me as an alternate for the FM diversion land management, and I am not an alternate, I am designated by the diversion authority to be on land management, so I would not be an alternate there. And then, Commissioner Mojo, I'm wondering if, on the, let's see, the water plan joint powers with the River Basin Commission, it's showing me as the delegate and you as the alternate. I would like to switch that if we could. I think you have more...
I've been going to those.
And I haven't because I have a conflict with Prairie Lakes in most cases. So, if we could just switch that where Commissioner Mojo would be the regular delegate and I'd be the alternate.
Okay.
And then, and then just for clarification on the Moorhead Business Association, that really isn't a voting member. I mean, we're members, but the, most of the voting, I think, and that is done by the executive committee. I don't know that...
Board of Directors.
Yeah, the Board of Directors does the voting. I don't know that members, they ever go out to members for votes. And if they do, then it would, you know, we would automatically qualify whoever is there representing.
I think, because at the bottom of the page, it does say Moorhead Business Association on all of ours, so...
Yeah.
It's almost something that should be added to all of ours.
Oh, it does say it, okay. Well, you know, I think whoever, you know, if there's, I guess there would be, if there's more than one, if they were to take a vote, then only one can vote, so maybe, maybe we should just leave that then.
Because then we have Jim as the alternate.
Yeah. Yeah, because the Moorhead Business Association isn't on everybody's, is it?
Well, at the bottom it is.
It is on a lot of them, so if you go to a meeting, that's part of everybody's...
Oh, I see.
Okay. My understanding is that any member of the Moorhead Business Association would vote for the Board of Directors.
Okay, vote for the Board of Directors.
I believe so.
Okay.
That's the only vote.
Yeah, but each entity is only allowed, I'm sure each entity is only allowed one vote, and that's where the issue comes in, is who would, who would vote for, on behalf of Clay County for that, so. Then maybe we better just leave it then. And then if you're the, if you're the designated alternate, if I'm not there, then you would automatically get to vote.
Sure.
Or maybe we could just show all, all others as alternates.
That's what we did with the planning commission, maybe that's what we should do.
Yeah, maybe if we could just down on the bottom, or just have everybody listed as MBA alternates.
Okay.
And then, if there's, if there's more than one there, then obviously only one gets to vote, but that's, those are the...
Jim, did you have any?
Nope.
And I'm okay. So...
Just move to adopting.
Okay, have any motion to adopt the changes?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, so we'll get a new list of this, of the assignments.
Thank you, Colleen.
With that, we'll go on to Lori. If we may, can see out of the, is this my chair here?
Yeah, that's yours.
Motor vehicle department.
Good morning.
Good morning, Lori.
Yeah, I'd like to request to fill the supervisor position on auto vehicle, family retiring after 42 years.
Wow.
Already, huh?
Yeah, already, I mean, unexpected.
Barely made probation period, I guess.
Yeah, so if I could, I'd request to fill that and backfill if necessary. There'd be, for 2020, it'd be pretty much a wash because there's a pay on a severance payout, but in the following years, it'd be about $20,000 savings.
I'll move to approve the request.
Okay, we have a motion by Grant, second by Jim. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, motion carries.
Also want to thank her for what a tenure with us.
Yeah, wow.
Okay, with that, we'll go into the voting equipment grant.
Yeah, the legislature made available some, about $2 million of money, of funds for voting equipment to replace, and we did replace all of our accounting equipment a couple of years ago, but now we need that assistive voting equipment replaced, so I'd like to apply for that. I'm not sure, depending on how much money we get, we could get $5,000, we could get $400, and if we got the $400, I think I would wait a couple more years to get the equipment because we have to spend it this year, but we could get some more whole pads. There's only a 25% match if we got a lesser amount. So, I'd like permission to apply for that voting equipment grant.
Okay. So, can I ask, Lori, when you apply for that, do you, do you ask for a specified amount?
No, I, it's, you get an amount per precinct.
Oh, okay.
Not necessarily, you're awarded based on number of precincts.
I see.
And so, you do kind of ask for an amount, but it's based on the maximum per precinct.
Okay. So, every, every precinct in the state has, has the potential of getting the same dollar amount per precinct?
Correct, and that's why it's, it could be five, the maximum is $5,000, but could be like $436, and in that case, the assistive voting equipment is $5,000. So, but we trying to live through this presidential election now with the ones we have, and then in two years, buy, buy new ones, but we'll definitely need to buy some by then.
Just so we don't have any hanging chads or anything.
Like, probably with them. Did you get those, that kind of equipment when I started?
I know. I do remember that.
Okay.
I would, I would move approval to go forward with the grant applications.
Okay, we got a motion for Resolution 202007.
I'll second the motion.
We got a motion by, and you second?
Yes.
Second, okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
That will go on to Sheriff Emptey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for having me this morning. Here today, I'd like to replace our current UTV that we have. We have the, it's a 2009 Polaris Ranger. It's a six-seater with open cab on it. Really, what I'm looking to do is have something a little bit more of a practical use for us to be able to use this current, or to be able to use this piece of equipment year round. Our current piece of equipment in the park after rollog, we won't take it out till maybe May, when there's a request from the Moorhead Police Department to use it for the marathon. If they don't request it, then it might not come out of storage until June, July sometime. So, what we're looking to do with this particular new piece of equipment, or replacement piece of equipment, would be to have a heated cab, we'd be able to put tracks on it, we'd be able to use it in the winter times like a rescue vehicle if we have people stranded in places we can't reach with our squad cars. We'd have heated place for them to be able to bring back to the squad car to where they're safe. We'd also be able to use it for investigations. If we have areas back near the woods where we can't get to with our squads, we'd be able to use that heat to keep our equipment warm, be able to use it during the flood time, to be able to get to places where we're not able to get to with our squad cars either. Just kind of a more of a practical purpose for us to be able to use it year round rather than have something sitting in a garage for most of the time when I use it. I did indicate that the sale of our current UTV, we put those funds back in internal service. After talking to a couple of our deputies, our current trailer may be a little tight, so what I would ask is that the current sale of our, of our, our UTV, we'd put that back into a different trailer, if possible. We're not going to know until we get tracks on it and actually see what the width is and things like that.
I'll move to approve the request.
Second. Any discussion?
What type of vehicle are you looking at now?
Looking at two different types. I got two bids from local Clay County businesses here. One is a, from Moorhead Marine, for the UTV Defender is what it's called, and another one's from Ardio for a Gator. The one from Moorhead Marine, the UTV itself is a little bit lower in price, but the tracks are higher, and then from, from Ardio, it's just the opposite, where the Gator's a little higher, the tracks are lower in price, but they both came in at the same, same quote. Just, the Gator for us right now has a little, few more options that we'd be looking for.
How long have we had the other one?
It's a 2009.
Okay.
So, we've had that one for 11 years now.
Have we got any use out of that one, or?
We have got some use out of it, yeah. It's just, like I said, it's a six-seater, so practical purposes for us in the winter times, it's not that good. It's an open cab.
Sometimes I wonder, would just, we say, well, we got an internal service fund, it won't cost us anything. Yeah, it will cost us something.
It does, yep.
It does cost us something, yep.
I did, I did have the local police department reach out and request to purchase that one, you know, depending on price and things like that, we'll see if we can sell that and the trailer to them, it was kind of a package deal if the trailer wasn't fit our current needs.
Okay.
It makes sense, I think you have a track vehicle too in your...
Right.
It does.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. So, how, how, how high is, does that thing ride? I mean, so like if you're going through water, how much water can you go through?
You can't go through a lot of water with it. One of our deputies has one of their own personal ones, and he tried to use it as a submarine.
Didn't work very good?
Didn't work very good. Once you get those things stuck, they're stuck. It's going to take a while to get them off. So, you can't go through a ton of water with them.
Okay, mud and stuff, yes?
Mud and stuff, yes.
Okay.
But the higher clearance is a big deal.
Yeah, there's higher windows, and the track itself is obviously the worst.
And then, does that, does that have a, a flat bed behind it then, or?
There would be, yes. There's, there's a box type bed behind it where we would be able to put equipment in if we needed to get it back into an area.
Okay.
Even sandbags, you know, we'd be able to take a ton of sandbag at a time.
Yeah, pumps or something, if you had to get a pump or something.
Back and forth, yep. Pumps, sandbags, things like that.
Okay, well, some of the rollers that could come in real handy.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor of purchasing the vehicle, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we're already heading to the end of the meeting here. Committee reports, we'll start with Kevin today.
Okay, so, last January 9th, I had a Lakes Country Service Cooperative meeting in Fergus Falls, and there's really, I think the biggest thing is the, we need a couple of military who isn't quite ready for this. The new school that they have in Fergus Falls there now is up and running, which is, which is a good thing. And then there's, there's been some funding issues with the ESS program, some of those things that are going on. I think that's probably happening throughout the school districts. And so, there's going to be some efforts going on through the Minnesota Legislature, and I ask that we be brought up to date on any House and Senate files for when we're in St. Paul on the last part of February, so if there's something that we can help with there, we do so. Yesterday, we had, we had our two meetings on the construction project, the first one being the jail and the LAC, and that is really wrapping up. I think we're looking at...
Twenty-second?
The twenty-second, yeah, is getting the inspection and hopefully get that turned That's going very well. Then the, the Regional Juvenile Center meeting, we are looking for a DOT inspection on the non-secure portion. I think it's on January 29th, my notes show, which time, once that's done, we'll get the certificative occupancy, and the non-secure will be ready to go. So, that's the end of this month, so that's good news. The secure portion, the DOT inspection is scheduled around March 13th, and so that we're looking at that as being about the time for overall completion on the 16th, I think, is what, what my notes said from yesterday. So, that's getting closer, and I do want to go back and the questions that were raised last week regarding the, you know, we were certainly, there were some current, some concerns about the contingency and why we weren't, no, but I, I want to point out, I think Commissioner Gross, you asked some questions regarding where we were with the dollars. And if you recall, back in, I think it was October, we all were handed this, this sheet in terms of, at that particular time, the owner contingency was at 229,000, the contractor considered it was plus 72,000 for a negative, total negative 156,000. We were anticipating, we had known new contingencies of 30,000, which brought us up to 186,000, and then we were saying, then we put in there in a, in a worst-case scenario, if we were to have 170,000 more in contingencies. And then the FFNE, I think that, did we, did we end up granting that yet, that additional FFNE?
I believe, I believe you did come forward on that.
But it didn't end up being 100,000.
I don't believe so.
Yeah. So, anyway, just to, just to update you, based on yesterday's numbers, where we anticipated the worst-case scenario being at 456,000, we are right now sitting at 392,000. So, and then we had, you know, how we pay for that 392,000, this is, we had worked with Lori on this, and we had, we had the 215,000, that was the bond premium dollars that could use to go against that, which would leave 177,000, and we still had over, over 241,000 in revenues over expenditures from 2018 that we said could be applied to that. So, we're still, we're still tracking in that range, and hopefully with two months to go, we won't see a whole lot. I know there's, there's a lot more demolition going on in the second floor, and they did say, see there's some things, but there's nothing quite as significant as what there had been on some of the other stuff, so. Just wanted to update there, so we're still, we're still in a position where we have the funds to pay for these overruns.
Thank you.
What the original, what the original bid was, we're not, we're not over what the original bid was, then, are we, or?
Yeah, oh, well, yes, yeah, because the, within the gross maximum price, we had established a certain amount for contingencies. So, the dollar amounts that we're talking about here are what we were over in that contingency, which means that's over and above the gross maximum price.
Okay.
That's, so that's what we're talking about here, and yeah, that's, it's not really a surprise when you're dealing with remodeling, you know, because there's so many unknowns, That concludes my report.
Jim?
Thank you. On Tuesday, I went to the City of Moorhead Planning Meeting, and there was a request for rezoning in the Holiday Mall area along 11th Street on the east side of that property, just south of River Point Senior Living Facility. There's a vacant lot there, and when the developer sold it to the other developer many years ago, they made a gentleman's agreement that there was going to be retail on the first floor of the apartment building that was going to be put up there, and when the plans came out, there was a request for us to vary that and to allow this building to be constructed without retail, so there was a little bit of a stir about that before the meeting, but then at the, when the meeting came, the second developer said that he was going to pull it off the table and rescind the request for the zoning change, because if and when he ever does decide to build, he will put retail on the main floor, and hopefully underground parking. So, that was all of that meeting. Then on Wednesday morning, I attended the Northwest Radio Emergency Communication Board meeting through ITV, and we had a grants update, election of officers, and continuing discussion regarding dispatcher retention, which is a difficult topic, and then that was it on that one. And then, was it Friday, Thursday? I'm sorry, Thursday, the Clay County Local Advisory Committee for Children's Mental Health met, and Kids Fest is coming up April 18th, the Moorhead Center Mall, and we're currently gathering information on the strengths of the Clay County Children's Mental Health system, gathering information on gaps in services, service providers, families, communities. And then we heard agency reports, the Mobile Mental Health Prices Team had 102 calls in December and 17 dispatches in Clay, 20 in Otter Tail, and the Juvenile Center has hired nine new employees in anticipation of the completion of the new facility. All the beds are nearly full, both in the non-secure and in the secure at this point. That's my total report.
Good.
Let's see, I had, we had the Yellow Ribbon meeting, and we had reports from various organizations that support that, the VA and, and some of the service organizations. Kevin already reported on the construction meeting yesterday, everything is going pretty well there, and let's see, we, what did you, we had a, we had a meeting with some diversion folks last week on the, yeah, on, on public outreach issues, and that was, that was a pretty productive meeting, I thought, so hopefully we'll have some, some things change with public outreach and some improvement, so that was it for me.
Jenny?
All right, thank you. Last week, I attended the Soil and Water Conservation District meeting, it was the first meeting of the year, so there were several items that they needed to cover just for that. There is a new chair there, Joel Hildebrand's the new chair, and I think Paul Krabinopt has been chair for 20 years, so it's a big change. They're working on lawn to legumes application, and then we'll have several meetings, crop update coming up next week, and cover crop landowner meetings as well, so.
Is Paul still on the board?
He is still on the board.
Okay.
I attended the Cass Clay Food Systems Commission meeting last week. We appointed a new at-large member, had a jurisdiction spotlight, the city of Moorhead, and had presentations on weed biology from Dr. Grammig from NDSU and Mike Schroeder from Moorhead Parks and Rec Maintenance. They elected a new chair. Because Clay County is serving, they're hosting, I am the new chair of that as well, so more to come from them. I attended the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting. We are in the process of making some updates to the personnel policy and discussed some upcoming maternity and paternity leaves that will happen, and there are two CDs that are maturing, so they're in the process of seeking out what the best option for that is. And had another update on the FM diversion rec plan governance discussion. It's, I mean, there, more discussion has to happen there, but MetroCog is really not in the position to serve in that capacity at all, and, you know, obviously, because all of our entities are at the diversion authority as well, I understand that, that discussion needs to happen, but MetroCog really is not in the position for that. I had a AMC Extension Committee meeting, because I'm the chair, I had to discuss several items for the upcoming year. We are in the process of reviewing the 4H youth award applications that go out on, at the legislative conference, will determine those winners, and what the highlight focus of the year is. Extension is in the process of doing some pretty profound outreach to farmers and mental health, and it was my choice to continue that focus, and because so many of us work with rural communities as well, I kind of felt like it was a good way to see what they're doing and then bring it to our farmers, especially in the crisis that they are experiencing. I had a couple of citizen calls. One was from a Holly Township advisor, Township Supervisor, thank you, about internet service and the Bowden subdivision. Apparently, it, it really is significantly limited in what they're able to access, and I know because both of you are on the rural committees, communities, I think we really need to advocate for that. I mean, that's, that's a subdivision on a major highway in between two, by a large area of people, and so for them to not have internet service, I think we need, we need to reach out. I made a call to our, our legislative reps about that. We also, I had a call from Bison, Bison Ridge subdivision about that road concern. If you recall, when that went in, there's an area that they needed to tweak a little bit, and so it sounds like they've, they've reached an impasse on that, so I'm going to make some phone calls to see what we...
Towards, out in the landfill area?
Well, it's north and east of the landfill area, yep.
Yeah, I remember that, we drove there.
Yeah. So, then yesterday, I attended, as chair now of the Cass Clay Food Partners, I attended the steering committee of the food partners. I feel like there's been a disconnect for a while in what the steering committee wants and what the commission wants, and I feel like it's important to have a representative there to help mold those discussions, so a really good dialogue, and we'll, we'll just keep trudging forward, I guess. That concludes my reports.
Yeah, I went to the, last Wednesday, I went to Wild Rice Watershed Board meeting, and most, a lot of the meeting was taken up with the trying to realign a ditch somewhere, and the trying to get easements for some land, and having a lot of problems going that, so hopefully they can work that out. The other thing on the Wild Rice Watershed, I know Jenny, you're the alternate there, January 27th, they got a one watershed, one plan. Do we still have that master planning meeting coming up on January 27th also?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so I don't know if you want to...
I, I, we have the annual meeting at Lakeland, I think, the 27th, or I do, so I don't...
Okay, well, I'll just have to let them know, no, we can't make that, then, hopefully some... of the other members can, so. Okay, other than that, I had the volunteers for the Historical Society. We had that recognition on Thursday, and they're looking for more volunteers. If there's anybody in the county that would like to, or anywhere wants to volunteer at the Historical Society, they're, they're looking for volunteers, some, whether you want to work three hours, four hours, whatever the case may be, they're, they're looking for some help there. Very, people that have worked there, it's very interesting. You meet people from all over the country coming in there, you know, and you're helping out there, so it's a very interesting job. Also, they're looking for a member, I don't know what we're going to call a member, but some of them Clay County here. I talked about this before, they're, it's 150 years recognition for Clay County coming up, not till 2022, I think, but they're planning on that. Marcus is already working on planning for that thing, so I don't know if there's someone here in Clay County that's very knowledgeable what's going on. I guess we should have, I shouldn't say knowledgeable, but everybody knows what's going on around here, but, no, we have someone, someone that could help out that. I don't know what, I think they would like for someone to participate in that group there, so. Okay, and I think that's for me. Steve?
I think as chair, last Tuesday I attended the meeting with the Mobile Mental Health Crisis Unit, Rhonda Porter and, and Lakeland Mental Health, and they're continuing to like, explore greater use of the program for the schools and law enforcement. On Wednesday and Thursday, I had a couple of different meetings with Troy and Kathy on the detox issue, and Joe with some of the insurance, some of the issues that they had with, with the sprinkler head back in, right before Christmas. A, there's a number of department head evaluations in January, so we've been working on those. I also attended the diversion communication plan meeting with Commissioner Whalen and Commissioner Campbell. Yesterday we had, we had a new higher orientation, I think we welcomed six new employees to Clay County. I also participated in the two owners' meetings, both for, for the corrections facility and the juvenile facility. Just to note, those additional beds are, the beds will be for the transition program, the new program, and they already have a waiting list for those, for those beds, so. And just lastly, one of the things that, that the board has asked each year is to get an update on the sales tax, and so I have some information.
Thank you. Nice.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, each year the board has requested just to have an annual update of, of where we, where we land each year on our sales tax collection. As you can see, last, in 2017, 18, we, we had $2,491,347. This past calendar year, that sales tax increased to $2,927,981.42.
It looks like there was a big, there was a big jump, but part of that is people getting on board and collecting the tax in the first part of 2000, you know, the 17, 18.
Wasn't there also the internet thing was resolved?
Yeah, that too. But a lot of people, because I would go, you know, some places and they wouldn't be collecting the tax, and so it took, it took people a while to start, start fully collecting it, so. It'll still increase some, but it's a significant increase for, you know, 500,000 in one year is a lot. It won't increase that much.
How do we know whether they're collecting it or not, or sending it in, or?
Well, I, I just look at my receipt when I go someplace.
Well, that I do too, but.
Yeah, and then the only other way would be when the Department of Revenue goes and audits somebody afterwards.
Okay.
Well, based on the numbers, it looks like everybody's doing.
It does, yeah, yeah.
And what, what was our projection for, for this past year, for what, what did we hope to get?
Well, we were just hoping for 2 million, you know, so we're doing, we're doing very good.
I think our original financial plan throughout the entire 20-year bond payment was 1.8.
That's, yeah, that's what we started at.
That's what we started with, so we're, we're.
This is going very well, man, so.
I, I think, I think it's important to acknowledge though that there, this still doesn't cover the full bond, you know, so the remainder of our financial plan that we were using still needs to be used, but probably not to the extent that we thought.
And that, that's the next page?
Yeah, right, that's the last column there. Yeah, so certainly this is great news from, from our standpoint, from finances, but.
It's awful close to that bond, I don't know, payment.
Well.
But in this projection sheet, I used a 2% inflation rate, so you know, if it's more than that, then we'll be doing better.
So the, the two combined, or we actually had three combined bonds for this, for these two projects, right?
Right, we had a capital improvement bond and two jail bonds.
And the, the total of the three of those?
53 million.
Yeah, so, you know, can you imagine, but, you know, financing a house for 53 million dollars, you're paying a lot more than that over 20 years, you know, so when you, you know, you take 3 million and multiply that times 20, you get 60 million, and so we're, that right there tells you we're going to be short, you know, but. Sure, and not, not, just from the standpoint of the bond, or the sales tax, being able to pay for it all.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, very good report, okay. Any further discussion on that?
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Okay. Any further then, or? Okay, just a reminder, next Monday, the board house is closed, so. With that, we're adjourned.